For real this time? Mr. Placko, can you call the room?
Lauren Gieske.
Here.
Linda Gracie.
Here.
Denise Brewster.
Here.
Scott Fishel.
Here.
Jennifer Harden.
Here.
Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
On behalf of the board, I'd like to welcome all students, staff, parents, and interested community members to tonight's Board of Education meeting. I'd like to remind everyone that this is a meeting of the Board of Education, held in public for the purpose of conducting the school district's business and is not to be considered a public meeting. There is time for public comment during the meeting in the Public Participation section on the agenda. I make a motion to approve the February 22nd, 2024 Board Minutes.
A second.
Thank you. Any discussion? All right, Mr. Placko.
Denise Brewster.
Aye.
Scott Fishel.
Aye.
Jennifer Harden.
Aye.
Laura Gieske.
Aye.
Linda Gracie.
Aye.
Motion carried. That brings us to tonight's Special Reports.
Okay, we have one tonight. We're really excited to have Mrs. Smolin, Principal of Buckeye Elementary, to kind of give the board an update on all of the awesome things happening at Buckeye. Does the down button advances?
Thank you. All right. Thanks for having me here tonight. I'm honored that Dr. Rettino, the board, asked for us to attend tonight and share with you just some of the great things that are happening at Buckeye in our little corner of the Riverside world. So it's kind of hard to just pinpoint one thing. So I just wanted to share with you what things are going on in the month of March because our year is busy, our year is lively, our year is fun. But March brings a lot more events and activities. So here's a little snippet of what's going on at Buckeye in the past couple of months here, February and March. One of the things that we have at Buckeye are the PBIS monthly character celebrations. We try to hone in on one of our different traits such as kindness, courage, perseverance, that aligns with our Riverside culture playbook each month. And our teachers are recognizing those students as homeroom teachers. They recognize students each month. And we try to tie in then a school-wide activity that demonstrates that character trait. So for example, we started off our year with kindness as our character trait. And we started off with an all-school assembly, kind of setting the stage for what our year is going to be like and focusing on kindness. One of my most favorite character traits that aligns with the culture playbook is courage and being the best version of yourself. And that's when we tie in our Veterans Day Assembly. And we have a fabulous, just overall, all-school activity where each grade level represents what's special to them, either by song, either by performance, by a speech, by a poem. Our speaker this year was Deputy Collins. He's our Resource Officer, who is a fabulous, fabulous addition to Buckeye. He was our guest speaker and gave probably one of the most motivational speeches that I've listened to in my eight or so years that we've been doing the Veterans Day program. So that was our character trait for courage. This past month, we recognized for February the trait of friendship. And so you can see here, we had each homeroom represented. Our first, our kindergarten and first grade representatives here earned themselves a T-shirt and a certificate. And each of the certificates shared what the quote was from their teacher, why they were recognized. So they loved that. So that's our kinders in first grade. We have our second and third grade Best Version of You Character Awards. And then we have our fourth and fifth graders. Missing from this picture is Bella Arbogast from fourth grade. The next thing I want to recognize is we have a greenhouse at Buckeye. And we got started with our planting early. And we had a couple of beautiful days, if you remember. They were a while ago, as we sit through the snow and all of that, waiting for spring to finally arrive. They said it did, but we're still waiting. But we talked with some of the local greenhouse companies, and they suggested that we do a hardy vegetable. So we did hardy vegetables. And in March, we planted on one of our 70-degree days. All of our students went outside. They had an opportunity to pick which leafy green vegetable they wanted to do. And we officially opened our greenhouse for planting. Fingers crossed that when we go to check on them and take them home on Earth Day, that they're green and they're still planting. Oh, did I?
No, Mike closed his computer.
Okay. Those are not images from our greenhouse.
Well, they would look great.
Open your computer, man! Is that a hummingbird? I don't know.
We're still working on it. But we have the screen.
Anyways, that's not our greenhouse. Third grade classes also had been doing hydroponic gardens. And so they transplanted their garden spider flowers on that day. And in the maintenance of making sure our plants are growing, we have our fourth graders that are going out to water our plants, measure their growth, check the temperature in the greenhouse. And like I said, we're looking forward to bringing those plants home on Earth Day and replacing them with some less hardier plants that can survive. We did sunflowers last year, and we're hoping to do the same. So you can see here, it was pajama day. So our kids, we, it was to kick off the Right to Read Week. And so our kids are in pajamas. But they also planted, and that's our third grade class that's transplanting their hydroponic spider plants. So that's fun. The next thing is we are entrepreneurs at Buckeye. Our fifth grade group has a business called Kids Biz. And believe it or not, when I talk to the teacher today, it's been in operation for 30 years. That just blows my mind. So this is a 30-year-old business that started eons ago with several teachers prior to, who's in charge of it now, which is Mrs. Andrea Lesko. We have four students and one in attendance, so I'm going to call her on up. Sadie Markajon, come on down. But we have four students that have really taken a liking and a real understanding to the business of Kids Biz and are carrying on that tradition. They start the day, 8:55. They roll out our cart, and they go until 9:10 for our business hours. And they work on management. They work through the money management of deposits and counting up the money when they're done, the ordering of supplies, and then also customer service skills, working with the public, which in this case means kindergarten through fifth grade. So they're peers, which is actually one of the things when we talk to each of the kids, what they really enjoy. So first of all, there's a picture of them in action. That's our Kids Biz right outside the office in the main lobby. And then this is Mrs. Lesko. She's a teacher that's currently in charge of it right now. And she said Kids Biz started 30 years ago. It was started as an economics project for a fifth-grade social studies class. And when that teacher moved on to a different position, it was passed to my mentor teacher. I watched as she ran it for seven years before she retired. Then she passed Kids Biz on to me. I have been running it now for 19 years. It has gone through many changes, from having many kids work it to just a few, from running it in the morning some years and lunch during other years. These days, I, these days, these days I have four workers who open it up on the first bell and close it at our late bell. We have used the money earned for field trips, for class projects, and for class supplies. It's been both fun and helpful for our fifth graders and quite a joy for me.
What do they sell, exactly?
They sell school supplies. Good question. They, erasers, pencils, little notebooks. And actually, Sadie would know, right? What else do you sell?
As you said, erasers. We sell pencils. We sell highlighters, like all kinds of school supplies.
Yeah, everything to get a K through five student through the day. Yeah. Summer Sursec Potts is one of our young entrepreneurs. And she said she enjoys Kids Biz because we get to help kids and teach them about money and how, and how much they have to spend, which is a huge deal. When kids come in, they have a dollar, they have two dollars. And a lot of them are still working through what that's worth and how much they can get for those items or for that denomination. So fifth graders help them work through that. Then we have Christian Robinson, who is another student that helps out with it. And he said, "One thing I like about Kids Biz is that I get to sell cool pencils, stickers, and erasers." We don't do anything but cool pencils at Buckeye. And erasers to kids. "I get to order stuff with the other kids who work at Kids Biz. I always have a good time working at Kids Biz." Here's Sadie. Do you want me to read it, or do you want to talk about it?
Okay.
I got you. "I love working at Kids Biz," says Sadie. "It's an amazing experience. It's so fun, and I'm glad I work there. Kids Biz is something that I look forward to every day, and it gets me up and moving in the morning." And then we have Elizabeth Audino. "What I like about Kids Biz and running a small business is that it teaches you how to interact with customers, people, and who you're working with. It's a great way to learn how to run a business. I also like that you get to order things with who you're working with and have a budget. It teaches you how to work together and stay within the budget. Lastly, I like just going straight to school and then having a fun time working together." And I will tell you, this is a good crew. Lots of different personalities when it comes to working in the business. And I think that's important, too, because anybody that is in the business world, as well as the educational world, knows it takes a lot of different personalities to make something successful. And I see that in each of the students, as well as their teacher. When they work together, you can start to talk the lingo after a while. You know, "How was business today? How were sales?" "Eh, it was down. It wasn't that great, but maybe tomorrow it'll be better." So they're a good group of kids. And it's fun to see them interact with the younger students, teach them about what they can buy, what they should get. And we've had some quality control issues where maybe some of our pencils don't work out as they should, and they break. And so they have to go through and, you know, take that out of their supply and realize, you know, there's that cost and everything involved. So great group of kids. Proud of you. Thanks for being here, Sadie, and being one of our young entrepreneurs. We also recycle. And we have a fourth-grade student recycling club. We have students that go around to each of the classrooms once a week, and they work together to gather up the supplies, the materials, and make sure that what they're collecting is going to fit with what the needs are for the recycling. So they take this very seriously. They go around once a week on Fridays during the fourth-grade IE time, which is intervention and enrichment. And they have to recognize that they are interrupting, not interrupting, I should say, but they are going to be going into classrooms that are still learning and still going through, and they could be in the midst of instruction. So they not only have to be efficient, but they have to be respectful of that learning time and making sure that they're efficient with getting what they need out. And so I talked with the kiddos today. And this is our group, Chase Burzen, J.J. Damadia, and Ronnie Mercer. And they were very meticulous about the route that they go, which classes that they go to first, what the cart's going to get hung up on, like if there's like little bumps or if there's, you know, little divots in the road because they don't want to spill their papers. And so they, talking with them, they are dialed in. And they do this once a week on Fridays. And their quote was, "We recycle every Friday during IE time, and we have to plan for all weather." So even if it's cold, if it's raining, if it's snowing, they're still recycling, and they have to plan for that. They said it's a lot of fun to go to all the classrooms, and sometimes Mrs. Cullacher, kindergarten, will give us candy. So there's some setups. The next thing is we're in the midst of March Madness. And I wasn't sure if I was going to include this or not, but it's been so much fun, and we've had a blast with it. Have you enjoyed it, Sadie? Yeah. We started off, it's a tournament of books. And each of our homerooms, our specials, our support staff, each chose a read-aloud book that they thought would be enjoyable for the classes to read. So we started off with our Sweet 16. And then each day, they had to go through the classes and read their books, and then they would vote on their favorite book. We dialed it down to the Elite Eight and the Final Four. And I will tell you, when I make that announcement at 2:00, 2:30 each day, you can hear cheers down the hall. It's like the best feeling in the world. And today I was doing a teacher observation, and all the kids wanted, they saw me walk in, and they sat down. They're like, "Do you know what the voting's like today? Do you know who's going to win? What's it look like?" Those are beautiful conversations. Kids were getting on the bus today, and they're like, "I really hope," because tomorrow's the championship game between our two final books. And they're like, "I really hope, you know, we're doing Thank You, Mr. Falker." And then The Book with No Pictures are the two final books. And it's a hoop. It's great conversations. It's excitement. I had an email from a parent that shared with me, her second-grade daughter couldn't wait to come home and tell her about all the details of the book, and she really hopes it wins. So those are, those are cool conversations to have. So this is our bracket. We had our books chosen. And like I said, tomorrow is our all-school assembly. We will reread the books, and we will have voting that takes place before the assembly. And we're like, "Are you team with no picture, The Book with No Pictures, or are you team Thank You, Mr. Falker?" And the kids are jazzed. I am, too. It'll be a nice way to send us off onto spring break. And finally, thank you to our dedicated Buckeye PTA. We are moving our fourth graders and our fifth graders, obviously, onto LaMooth next year. And I can't say enough about this team that we have as our Buckeye parents and board members. Mrs. Jen Kalin and Mrs. Rachel Mercer, both their children are moving up to LaMooth next year. Mrs. Jen Kalin, I've worked with her since I started at Buckeye, and she's fabulous. Just, they're always go-getters, always doing what's best for kids, trying to figure out what can we do that's going to be an exciting event for our community, bring our kids together, allow opportunities for learning. So I just, I would be remiss if I didn't include our parent team and our board members for all that they've done for our kids. And finally, in closing, we have our modulars up and going. Thank you to Rich Arlesik and John Runway from the Tech Department, Maintenance Department, Central Office and Board for getting those up and moving for us. It's been nice. So thank you. And in closing, again, thanks for having us here for representing Buckeye. I'm proud. It's, like I said, it's my 22nd year in education, 21 here at Riverside. And I couldn't be more proud of the things that are going on at our school, with our kids, with our parents, with our community. So thank you.
We have one more task for Sadie. If she could come down here and take a picture with Mrs. Smolin.
Don't shift.
All right. One, two, three. All right, good job. Thank you.
Sadie, do you guys sell mechanical passes?
Mechanical?
Do you sell mechanical passes, too? Those are good seller, aren't they?
You want those, you know what I got.
Yeah, those are good seller. And that concludes this month's updates.
Thank you.
That brings us to old business. There were no old business topics submitted via email. Was there anything that came up? All right. Then that brings us to new business. We had two different things submitted, or three technically. So Mrs. Gracie, I'll let you start with your items that were on our new business.
So I just wanted to address our $2.5 million grant, right, and how that, how that fits into our facility plan. I just want to make sure that we're cognizant of, because we haven't talked about that at the table. And I wanted to make sure that we are making sure that we take into account the fact that we put forth in the last board meeting that we were going to, you know, go to the community and have some conversations about how we were going to spend the dollars that we had earmarked. And I don't know how that was all wrapped together, because we had not talked about that.
Yeah, I can speak a little bit to the grant. The grant, we applied for the grant a while though Dr. Lacher went and did a lot of work on that. And it was awarded after, we didn't know anything about it until after the last board meeting. And so kind of that, that may have changed a little bit. Because it did come with a, we, if we're being honest and say that we thought we would get all $2.5 million, I didn't necessarily think any one of us thought that. We are super excited that it allows us to look to build on to that, you know, onto the campus in certain spots. I think it allows us to better really utilize all of our contractors as they come in. I think it needs to go through both the community as well. While this process is going, I think it can both exist in tandem. I think that's the vision of it, is to work in tandem with building this new addition, as well as kind of going to the community to kind of see what their, what the next steps are and what they feel like those next steps are about the entire school district. Because we have more than just one high school, more than just one building here. We know that it has needs. So what those look like as well, kind of moving forward. And that's also, again, working with not only our community committee, but then also buildings and grounds, making sure that we're all on the same page and kind of all working in synergy to reform. So I think that's, that it's exciting and kind of where it is. And I'm moving forward. It's really, it's really 400,000 of that 2.1 is dedicated to equipment and technology as well. So it's really 2.1 for the facilities and kind of where it goes from there.
So will we be able to get the facility done for the remainder of those dollars? Like, are we, like, I guess I'm concerned about the money that we're actually going to set aside.
So when we planned it, she went through TDA, the architecture firm, and they budgeted $495 a square foot at 4,500 square feet, which is where the 2.1 is coming from. So that's their, their recent going rate for new construction in schools, what they found it to be.
Is there any expectations, I guess, from the board where we want to make sure we're getting updates on kind of the progress? I think letting the administration know that would be...
Yeah, I was going to say, since I was appointed to represent the board on the Strategic Planning Committee, we did have some discussion because that news came right before we were meeting. And everybody was pretty excited about that opportunity. But it also presented a very short window where you need to have this built. And there seemed to be the feedback with the community members in that meeting, especially one who has experience, you know, because she is an architect and she's been a longtime community member, that, you know, basically, there are certain things that have to be done. And she recommended that we might want to look at a design architect.
Design-build.
Design-build. So in other words, they would design and build. So it saves many months in the process. And so that made sense. But again, it was before we were meeting here. And I always assumed that we would be discussing it. It was just we were between meetings. So, and I was actually, is that the meeting where I was in Florida on a conference call? I had to pull off and sit in the hotel parking lot and be in the meeting that way. But there also, you know, she talked about opportunities that it created. And so there was some discussion there, too. You know, like, for example, if you're air conditioning this space, that, you know, rooms that are, you know, nearby could also be air-conditioned at the same time for a lot less cost. So those are all things that were thrown out by the community member. And so, you know, that's kind of where the conversation started in, you know, the forum that we had set up.
How long do we have to, what's the timeframe for the grant money?
They have to be fully liquidated by September, do you assume the funds? It's kind of a two, two answer to this question. So when the grant was written, it was proposed that we have construction completed and moved into the space in the spring of 2026. But obviously, we know with construction that you don't always meet your timelines. For the grant purposes, we have till September 30th, 2027, to commit the funds and cover the funds. Then September 30th of 2027 to liquidate, basically spend those dollars.
Okay.
Which is a, you know...
We will not be putting kilns, because apparently those take seven years.
Yeah, right. I just want to make sure that we, as a community, are cognizant of the money that we had set aside for, you know, the priority projects that we had from Byaloski, and that we make sure that we're wrapping our heads around that at the same time and not, not going, okay, and spending all the dollars that we have on this, right? Like, we talked about that. Just, just making sure that we're cognizant of what it is that we have to do with our other facilities as well and not committing all of the dollars that we have set aside for that purpose. Because it kind of takes away from the fact that we asked Byaloski to do some work on what are our priority projects. So, you know, I think if we can wrap that information around with what we do with the facilities plan, and we can move that forward sooner rather than later, obviously, I think that will be helpful.
I think this grant can help us with some of those, knock out some of the priority projects and potentially even at less cost because we'll have the contractors on site at the time. So just, you know, it makes us go, we would bid them more as a alternate and kind of look at where they come in. And I think, I think it gives us a little more leverage and choices to where we go with some of those high priority projects, because those are all part of the building process and the designing process. And I think it's, in terms of what it's going to look like moving forward, it's super exciting. It's going to be a great addition to, to the school and kind of to how it looks and where. The choice to put it even can really kind of alter even the whole vision of the school and kind of what, what we had in just a short vision meeting. I'm really excited about the, the potential that it has and just sitting with, you know, Dr. Lacher, Mr. Arlesik, Mr. Hall, and just kind of just throwing up on, this is what we can do. This is kind of how it can look. It's right by our welding lab and our current wood shop. And we get tied all together with some of our other, our other CTE offerings and have like a CTE hub and put a second floor in as well at the same time with some of our new CTE career courses.
And hopefully, the community then understands that things come up, right? And we have a vision of doing one thing, and we talk about it at the table. And then all of a sudden, something, something happens, right?
I think it was two days later.
I don't want to say it throws a monkey wrench into things, because it really doesn't. I mean, this is a great, great opportunity for us. But it does, it does cause us to then say, okay, step back for a moment, pause, rethink, and now we're going to, we're going to consider this as well, which wasn't in our original thought process. And so, so I'm hoping that the community understands that sometimes you just, you have to pivot really quickly and start thinking in a different way, which we had not anticipated. And so...
I mean, we did put out an RFQ for the owners rep. I know we had a discussion, lengthy discussion about that at the last meeting. But I think the understanding was now we have a project because of the grant. We put that RFQ out as soon as possible because we want to hire the owners rep to help us through this project, also help us pick a design professional, design-build professional to execute this project. And that could morph into what other things do we roll into this project with also being conscious of the grant timeline? We want to slow that piece down. Do we incorporate other projects in that? Or this could roll into the whole big picture as well. So it's kind of a multi-approach to it. And, you know, we want to make sure we get our grant timelines, and we felt like it was necessary to go out. We've actually had a lot of interest from owner representation firms since we put that out. They're due back in April. We'll start narrowing those down and picking a professional.
Will we be interviewing the top candidates again?
And that's the, probably have to figure out how we're going to finalize.
Right. So it's like advertising, but no decisions have been made. You know, people just, you know, apply. But, you know, to your concern, Linda, basically, you know, we've got the four-inch binder over there of critical needs and things that need to be done. But, you know, when you're opening up things or connecting things, there may be opportunities that an owners rep is going to be able to say, hey, while we're in here, we could do thus and so. So I think that's what we'll probably hear from that person because that's what they do.
I think we just have to be careful, though, because that's all here at the high school. We still have...
Oh, I know.
Other buildings that we need to make sure we're taking care of. So as we balance all that out, I think is just the concern.
Yep.
I guess I would ask the board, is there an expectation that we want to interview the owners rep?
Yes. I think, I don't know. I mean, I didn't know what the expectation was.
I think it's important that we do.
Well, when you say "they," would it be narrowed down to one party that the board interviewed? Or would it be two or three parties?
Probably two or three. So the last time, the Buildings and Grounds Committee.
Yeah, I was just pointing that out.
Yeah, the Buildings and Grounds Committee last time narrowed it down. Then they brought a couple in for us to interview as a board. Is that the expectation?
Ain't good, right?
Last time, we had four firms submit. One had pulled out. So we had three firms. We narrowed down to two that came to the board. This time, obviously, we'll find out April 3rd when the statement qualifications are due. I've talked to at least four or five firms already that have expressed an interest. And so, you know, we will kind of see who actually submits. One said we're not going to submit. They were looking for larger projects. But it's, you know, there's other firms we've talked to, you know, the firm that Concord Township used for the fire department. We've talked to the one that the county's been using for their projects and a few others that have expressed interest. So it's, we have some nice interests so far. So hopefully, we get several that submit so we can have a good, good number of firms to select from.
Do you know what day we would, you don't know what day we'd be bringing them in? But if we could schedule that, if Buildings and Grounds is going to review...
Buildings and Grounds in April is the 9th.
That's probably too early.
It's probably too early for them to get a presentation.
We should probably give an update to Buildings and Grounds, together, that they have what we received. And maybe from there, we'll determine, do we have the Buildings and Grounds Committee narrow down to some finalists for the board to interview, or how we move forward with that, so...
I think, just so everybody's clear, I think the board has the expectation, though, that we, at some point, it would come to the board, right?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay. And then the other thing that would be a consideration for the board is that within that grant, there was something that is not covered that was a commitment. that grant, there was something that is not covered that was a commitment from our district. What's it?
So our in-kind, and the grant, our in-kind proposal was we would pay for the furniture, classroom furniture that goes in there. But we'd have to figure out what we would need and what it would look like first, as part of the design process.
So one more item. I know, Ms. Grassi, you said, you just said that the board had appointed a certain amount of money to address the Bieloski report. Do you remember what that amount was?
I do, I don't remember what we had put, set aside. Like, we did the Esser funds.
I think, I think what Ms. Grassi was referring to was money that we created, savings that we created through the Esser.
That we had put it in the PI fund.
So it was $3 million that we transferred to PI at that time we did that. So I think that was the funds you were referring to.
But I don't think it was earmarked just for those repairs. It's earmarked for what the district needs done.
It was earmarked for facility approvals in general at the time.
I mean, we had set that aside prior to going on the ballot for the levy and whatnot and asking for the high school, that we had, we had just planned for, you know, we'd be doing some other things. How are we going to finance? How are we going to pay? And so we had, you know, put this money over to the PI fund so that we could have something. I think we were also thinking about, like, that was, I think we were going to get the money to bus garage or transportation.
Yeah, I think we did that before the VOD issue, so the thought was if VOD should pass those funds, we'd use for a transportation garage and those things, but obviously that, you know.
And if those are dollars that, right. And we've talked about those dollars at this table and we've kind of talked about, like, some things that we have done smartly to plan and put money aside in the PI fund that would be available to use for those critical repairs or whatever. Right up front, we have some dollars available. I want to make sure that we are addressing needs at other schools, like, as well, to make sure that we're able to fund all that. And so I think the, the sooner the facility committee that we have can start to wrap their head around that and what that's going to look like, I think that's going to be better for us overall as we, like, try to start.
Get facility plan?
Bringing somebody else in to do this as well, so.
It is exciting though, the 2.5 million. So thank you. Yeah.
No doubt about that.
Yeah. It's a great opportunity.
Any other discussion on that? All right. So Mr. Fishel, I think you had two items that you brought to the table.
I've been investigating how we can save money on our bus fleet. So I've spoken with a company that owns Crown with a K and it's an undercoating product. And there's a company, a business in Painesville that does that sort of a business for cars and trucks. And there's a ma- master distributor in Pennsylvania of Crown. And then there's another company that's just over the border in Pennsylvania that travels and will actually apply the product at different districts on their property to the buses. So I've been investigating that and a couple of things on that. They said that the military in Canada had done an extensive study and found that when they did that with their vehicles, they got a $6 return for every dollar that was spent. So I thought that was pretty good. And the other thing is that I'm going to be meeting with the transportation supervisor at a school district in North Royalton next week and also speaking with a couple of their mechanics about their experiences as to how it's worked for them. So anyway, overall, what we're looking at, Mr. Plankow had said that our average bus life's about 12 years, right? So they are looking at upwards of 20 years when they take care of them this way. And so what that means for this district is we could be saving $4 million on our bus fleet. So I'm looking into that and gotten some preliminary pricing and the preliminary pricing is about $15,000 for a year of application. And I'll be looking at that and evaluating that a little bit further and then bringing more information. The other, the other item I was looking at.
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
Can I ask a question? Are you, are you involving our administration in that because that would be their rules?
So, so what we did was Superintendent Rotino and myself met with Kyle. So we had an initial discussion with Kyle and talked with them about the process and then I'll be bringing more information. And then as the process goes, if everything works out, then Superintendent Rotino would be looking at having Kyle have one of these buses treated to see how it goes, to see if we're interested in the process. So yes.
So I would ask that it actually goes to the Finance Audit and Personnel Committee because I think it's about saving money, spending money, that kind of thing. And I think there's a little bit of research to say, I, I question, do we have the facilities? So I mean, our buses can't even fit in the garage, so I don't know what's needed.
That's the work. That's the information I'm gathering right now. So I'll have all of that information ready, set to go and all of the information will be delivered. At that point, anyone can do any further research as they want. Circle it.
So can the finance personnel kind of put that on their list of things to keep revisiting and understanding what the impact is?
Yep.
Thank you.
Are you guys going with Mr. Fishel to that meeting?
I was, I was with him for the initial meeting. It was a really positive meeting. I was not going with him to the North Royalton meeting. I didn't know when. You said next week.
Yeah, there'd be really no reason to. I'm just going out there to see what they have. So if that works out, then certainly it could be a field trip, whether it's one, two, three people, administration go look at it. I'm just doing the legwork right now for the district on my own time and I will bring the information and we can proceed if you want to. But the bottom line is we could be saving $4 million.
I do know when we talked to Mr. Andre about just the buses, when we have an opportunity to get some undercoated, we do. But a lot of times the delay is so long in the turnaround that we don't necessarily get them at that point and they're, they're working with it. The other issue that comes up with specifically where we have in our buses that causes some of that is road salt, obviously. So when it's, we haven't had it in winter, but the road salt, and we don't have a place inside to rinse, to wash them down. So it's really cold to use a hose because they just use a hose right for the bus wash there. That's, that's the one and the other is where they park them. We have, he has noticed just anecdotally that the buses that he parks at Melridge and Lamuth, because they're parked on asphalt, last a little longer than the ones we park out here on the gravel. So those are both kind of, you know, other factors that lead to some of this as well.
Right.
Maybe this undercoating would help.
Right. All that information is all part of the discussion and process. And then the nice part about this, this opportunity is there's a company that'll actually travel here and apply the product here on our property. We don't have to drive the buses somewhere. And I think a lot of school districts do bus, do park their buses outside, so, you know, so it, obviously, you don't want, hey, one piece of experience. You, you want a book of experience and that's what I'm looking at right now gathering. So then certainly can turn it over to finance or whomever would want it. The, the second item is.
I'm sorry, one more thing on that.
Yeah, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
Because, Mr. Plankow, I think with our program we already have for our bus program of how many we replace so often, there'd be a change to that then if the buses last longer. So I'd be, I just think it's something we should take a look at and understand what would that, how that would change also.
Yeah, at the last, it just says, last, what was it? We met Wednesday, was it? Because it was a rescheduled meeting. Yeah, Jen and I heard about where we are with the bus fleet and the finance committee. And it's, it's amazing. I was trying to find, I had screenshotted, but I can't find it right now, but can you give us the stats on where we are with our buses?
Well, we, I think it was last meeting, we kind of talked about the bus replacement schedule. We've finally caught up and we don't necessarily need to buy five a year right now, so there's going to be deferred purchases right now because we've finally gotten caught up in.
Yeah. And in the amount of time that, you know, you started till now, that's been quite an expensive thing to do and, and we're caught up. And so it's, I look at it as a way to protect it in a climate like this and, because it's a huge investment. And so it's definitely worth looking into.
Yeah.
So, Mr. Plankow, you had mentioned buses today are about 120,000, right?
Correct. Yeah, about 120,000.
Okay. And when you go back, how many years, how much were they?
They were in like the low 80s. Basically, since COVID is when they, they really.
So how many years ago, low 80s?
They were in the 80s in like 2000, I would say like 18 or 19, I think it was. And in the last couple of years, they've really gone up, but prior to COVID, they were in probably the mid 80s.
And so I just want everyone to understand, that's a 50% increase. That's unlikely to happen again quickly, but we know things don't go down usually, right? And, and so when I mentioned the $4 million, you, you can manipulate money and, and numbers any way you want, but that's static numbers today at $120,000 a bus. So, you know, as things change and you have inflation, the savings is likely to be greater because you're not going to be buying things at an increased price. Anything else on the buses?
No, I just want to, I just want to make sure that we are, as board members, not overstepping our, our levels of authority. I want to make sure that we're taking people from the district with us, like, if we're going to go represent.
So do you know what a board member's job is legally in the state of Ohio?
We can go around and around. I just want to make sure that we're not speaking for the, like, you're not going to go speak for the board.
So our job is to do what's best for the district.
I understand.
There is no overstepping of bounds as a board member.
I just want to make sure that we're not committing or giving people the impression that, like, a board member is speaking for the district in full. Like, I, I just, it would make me more comfortable if we had somebody from the district actually, like, tending with, just as a matter of protocol. I know that that's what we have listed in our kind of policy handbook. That's kind of what our expectation is, so.
So when you're elected as a public official, you're supposed to serve the public. That's what I'm doing. Saving the taxpayers money. So if you want to try and put the training wheels on that, you can, but I'm not going to stop doing that. Any other thing on the bus?
Nope.
Okay. So as far as roofing goes, we have the Bieloski report and there's a lot of roofing in there. And, and just a quick overview on that without getting into details, the way, the way that I'm looking at the report and some rough numbers, I think we can save about $2 million off of the Bieloski report on the roofing. That can be developed further through Buildings and Grounds and otherwise and presented later, but just round numbers, just want, want the taxpayers to know that I think we can make their tax dollars go further than, than may look at first plans. So that's just a quick thing on the roofing.
All right. Any other discussion about that? Great. Thank you. That was all for Old and New Business. That brings us to our Board of Education Committee and Liaison Reports. First on is the Superintendent's Business Advisory Liaison. So we did have a business advisory meeting on February 29th. Ms., Dr. Rotino had presented a general idea of what the portrait of Riverside Bieber looks like. All the members of that committee, they did give a lot of feedback and I think you are working on taking in some of that feedback and adjusting it.
We're, yeah, we're, the reimagistic art skills, so we're going to need to, you know, work on getting some, a little bit more advanced help to kind of do what they, some of those suggestions are, but they were great.
Yeah.
Feedback was awesome. And I'm looking really forward to kind of, you know, sharing that with the greater community, the board, the greater community as soon as it comes through because it's something that really is, it captures culture playbook and strategic plan kind of all in one. It's a really.
So I think in the near future, we'll see that. I think everybody will really like what is being done and I think it's being made so it can apply to different grade levels and also connect to different parts of what we're just doing throughout the district, so. All right. That brings us to our Curriculum and Programming and Facilities Liaison, Mrs. Brewster.
We did not have a meeting this month. We had had two meetings prior to this. And so I took this opportunity to meet with Cheryl Lanning, the Director of Student Services, who is also a member of the Curriculum Committee. And Mrs. Lanning wears many hats for our district while serving the various needs of our students in pre-K through post-graduation, actually, right? Because there's programming after.
Correct.
All of the special needs students fall under her leadership in these many programs and we serve them within Riverside, but there's also a lot of other resources outside. Some students go to Broadmoor or other places. And so, you know, they're just, you know, depending on their needs. There are multitude of auxiliary and related services that are available to our students as well. In addition, Mrs. Lanning and her staff meet with parents and staff with, or, excuse me, they meet with the parent, her staff meets with parents and they try to match the services to assist the students' needs and depending on what their identified areas are. Mrs. Lanning also oversees the gifted and accelerated program in our buildings and she, they identify students in need of that programming. She also is in charge of kindergarten registration, which is coming up April 2nd, as well as kindergarten screening. She also manages the school nurses and we use PSI for that and we're pretty well covered in the district, so that's good. So hats off to you, Mrs. Lanning and your staff. And the Curriculum Committee meeting will be, coming up, will be on Wednesday, April 3rd at 7:30. And we will be discussing the new changes that have come from the state mandating certain programs for our reading instruction. So there's going to be more to report on that. Anything else you want to add other than congratulations on incredible grant?
Okay. Anything else? That's it?
All right.
That brings the Buildings and Grounds and Operations Committee, Mr. Fishel.
So for Buildings and Grounds, Buckeye Modular was the top of the list and that's all been finalized and, and the final inspection for occupancy was completed satisfactorily and so we're up and running. Lake County Water Department to change out campus water meter on Tuesday, March 26th. The semi-annual Health Department inspection to take place for all of the Riverside schools on March 26th. The choir room rooftop air conditioner is going to be replaced. Technically, it's a six-ton unit. The cost will be $34,750. That'll be in, in for approval today. Lamuth basketball on Four Square, quote, it's an outside area that'll be created as part of a playground area. And the quote on that was $18,060. That's in for approval today. And then John R. has a roof repair that's going to be taken care of. It's been a chronic issue and that should be in process and may be done yet, Mr. Arlessic? No, so soon. And just a, an ongoing problem that, that will be repaired and remedied. And then we have the Lamuth gym flooring from Cincinnati Flooring. The cost will be $132,350 to put a new gym floor in. It's a synthetic product, works great in a lot of schools, colleges, and, and works great. So anyway, that's, that's going to be done and, and I know that Principal Bassett will be excited about that.
He is.
And that's really about it. Is there anything else, Ms. Grassi?
As far as the roof at John R., what, what was the extent?
Oh, there's, there is a little area out by the Koopa that, that's been a chronic leaker, so Roberts Roofing does the general repair work. They're going to go up and create a little different situation on the roofs and, and make it like a permanent repair. So it's a repair, but it should last a long, long time.
Okay.
It's just been an ongoing little issue that'll be taken care of. It's not a lot, not going to be a lot of money.
Was that cited in that?
It probably was not cited. They probably didn't even know about it, so. It was part of the entire assessment when it comes to roofs. Oh, it is in the assessment? Okay, so great. So that'll be an item that's knocked down.
Check.
It'll be a check mark. So great.
Good. Anything for the alumni association?
No update on the alumni.
Okay. That brings us to Policy Committee and Legislative Liaison.
Sure. We haven't had a Policy Committee yet, meeting yet. We haven't received updated policies. As far as legislative, some of the things that have been going on, I said I would continue to update our community. So in the Senate, this is for the week of February 26th, because that was right after our last meeting. The Senate voted unanimously to concur with the House changes to Senate Bill 17, which would require the State Board to update the standards and model curriculum for financial literacy and entrepreneurship in grades nine through 12 to include free market capitalism content. And the bill went to Governor Mike DeWine for signature. The Senate also unanimously passed an amended Senate Bill 104, which would revise the operations of the College Credit Plus program. The amendments do the following. They add a second date in November for students to be able to enroll and elect to participate in College Credit Plus, which right now it's just in the spring. And it would remove language that would have required school districts and institutions of higher education to split CCP textbook costs 50/50, which our textbook costs are on our board agenda.
Hundred percent's our cost.
I know, it's a hundred percent.
They was saying split it 50/50 to colleges and they said no, the school districts will be.
Yeah. So that was that bill and I think of, what is it, $14,000 this, this semester. The Senate also passed an amended House Bill 27. One of the amendments establishes a $600 million for the Ohio School Building Assistance Fund, which was part of the capital appropriations bill. And that bill now goes back to the House for concurrent vote. The Senate unanimously passed Senate Bill 154, which would make changes to the Ohio revised code to include Space Force in the definition of our forces. So I would imagine we would probably have some policy changes that would go along with that. And that, the Board of Education would need to present that to students and, and when we do career information, so. Let's see, the Senate Education Committee held a second hearing on House Bill 214. That bill clarifies that schools cannot require employees or job applicants to offer an opinion about specific beliefs, affiliations, ideals, or principles. Thought that was interesting. The Senate Ways and Means Committee held a third hearing on Senate Bill 186, which would require payment of property taxes and assessments when a lot is split and transferred and generally would prohibit tax-linked property owners from purchasing tax-foreclosed property. The Joint Committee on Property Tax Review, which, which I've made mention of a number of times, also heard invitation-only testimony from the National Conference of State Legislators, the Council on State Taxation, and they addressed the Ohio property tax system in Ohio and how it compares to other states. One more. The week of March 11th, the State Board of Education held a public meeting and the State Superintendent of Public, Public Education, Paul Kraft, updated the board on its financial status and outlook for the rest of the biennium. Current projections from the State Board of Education show that the board will have a $3.5 million deficit by year's end and the State Board of Education will consider raising licensure fees to minimize financial losses. I'm just putting that out there because I think teachers who are going to renew their licenses will probably want to know that. When, when they passed the budget bill and they split the State Board of Education, they didn't fund the State Board of Education, so now they're facing deficits. I just thought that was an interesting tidbit. That's all I have. Thank you.
All right, that brings us to the Superintendent's Report.
Okay, great. March is a very busy month around here. Super excited to kind of share this. Obviously, we've talked about the two and a half million dollar CTE grant, but I'd be remiss if I didn't mention how excited we all are about it. It is not, just to kind of clarify, we're not looking to be a replacement for Auburn. Auburn has its place. We have certain classes that we offer that are really creative and outside of the scope of your typical, what you think of education. We have a construction class for seniors where they're building things in a classroom. And it's not necessarily in a, in a space. So this, this two and a, this new addition will allow us to really kind of provide these services in one location, showcase them to our public, potentially even open up some of the, like a fab lab to the public on off-hours as well, similar to the way that Hive does at Lakeland. But then also give the space that they need to kind of really get that in-depth, hands-on learning that they want. So we're really excited about what this can do for the high school and really kind of bringing that to the next, to the next level. Again, Mrs. Smolins stole my thunder, but we said by break. We had that module up and running and we made it. So we're up by break now. Didn't necessarily say spring break, but we did say by break. So the new modules are up and running. They are, they're being occupied and it's really kind of eliminating some of the issues that we have at Buckeye. So real happy for that and thanks to everyone who worked hard to make that happen. It was not the easiest of things. A little bit of an upgrade on Lamuth. Mr. Fishel did talk about some of this, but we are transitioning as we get ready for our fifth graders to join our Lamuth students in putting in a four-square area, which will go right outside the building. Four-square basketball court, which will be outside, putting away from the parking lot a little bit. There will be a Gaga ball pit that is a Eagle Scout project. I could, we tried to define what Gaga ball is. I know that our kids love it and that's just about where we're going to go with it. So it's a really fun game for our kids in a big wooden pit that they'll enjoy. And the Lamuth gym floor is getting resurfaced. We're hoping to get that done, but it will probably run into part of the school year. Dr. Bassett would prefer to have it done sooner rather than later. This is a, when you look at the Bieloski report, this is falls on our priority one and two. And we do, we are saving some money by using this product because it goes over top of the floor tile. So we don't have to abate it, but then also as it moves through, the VCT tile is also one of those high priority items. So it's not all of the VCT tile in the building, but this is the worst of it. So we know that we are kind of covering that up and the floor will be great. It will also be logoed. We're going to work with what it is. Dr. Bassett requested his face on the middle of the floor, but he said probably not. But it depends. So we're gonna, we will have a logo in the center and then it will also be marked. And it also impacts our eighth graders who play their indoor sports events down there. So it will be basketball and volleyball come down to play at Lamuth and playing on a newer surface will be great for them as well.
Can I see a picture of the field? Is that the?
That's the field. That's, so the, behind that field is the, that's the football field that's being redone. Right in front of that is where we're going to put the basketball court. You know, the outdoor basketball court. And we will also put our security updates, upgrades. Make sure we have cameras so we can kind of view those as well for all those times that are there.
Quick question.
Yeah.
And I was saying we don't have to abate the asbestos tiles. And I know we talked about that, but how much about are we saving on that?
It was a minimum $60,000.
So just want everyone to know that it's a nice savings being able to go over the top.
We're super excited to do that and it also speeds up the process.
And was the floor cited in that report as well?
Yeah, VCT tile as well. They did cite the gym specifically. They did cite the VCT tile and the abating all the asbestos. And I know it's been a priority since I was over there and oh, he ought to go and continues to still be there. There are tiles that are popping up every now and then. We have to take care of and put on different tiles and all of that. Last week, we hosted our second of the senior citizen appreciation nights of the year. We welcomed hundreds of local senior citizens in for the appreciation dinner that was put on by Mrs. Brandehoff's Principal's Foods class. And then we gave them an opportunity to see the free performance of this year's spring musical, Big Fish, which was phenomenal. The event was great. We took advantage of that spring. Advantage of having that group of people in. Did you have a survey out? Mr. Carbine created a senior survey to kind of just get their, get their pulse on the, on the facilities and kind of events and all that.
A copy.
We have a copy of the survey. We will be sharing out those results as well at some point as we move on. It does fit into our strategic plan. So that'll be up in the neck, one of the next updates to kind of give a high-level summary of what our, what our seniors kind of feel, who came in. But it was a great dinner and they really kind of enjoyed the camaraderie as well. And then Big Fish was last weekend, three nights. It was awesome.
I've heard nothing but great things about it.
It's sad. It's, I didn't think it was as sad as the musicals were. They, they did an amazing job. Just the scene change, changes and the way that it went and the fact that it was really exciting. And they did mention that SpongeBob is next year. So they are super excited about SpongeBob and I'm predicting three sold-out nights for that one. The Lake County Music Festival, Chamber Music Festival was up here in, I think it was late, late February? I think it was one of the dates.
March 2nd.
Oh, what's that? Or March? Oh, it's right up there. Well, February and March, they all run together. We had enough, dozens of our own Riverside band students came together to do these small groups and small group settings, which were not only adjudicated by retired musicians, but then also they provided feedback in a clinician-type setting. It was a really neat opportunity for them to come together and work on their individual skills. It describes a lot why our band is so good on Friday nights, just the work they do here. So really excited. Just a great opportunity for not only our directors who put it on and our, our music people, but then the, the volunteers who come, the retired musicians who come to work with them. And in March is the end of winter sports. We have our state competitions. Congratulations go out to both Antonio Maitij and David Roach for their success at the wrestling meet. Antonio was a state runner-up. Unfortunately, he lost to the prior-year state champ in the heavyweight for the second time. And David placed eighth. So it was a, we were really kind of a tough fight, but great. Both of them wrestled amazing and kept to get where they were, so. Other successes, we have Matty Moore placing 17th in the indoor state track and field meet. And Mia Petrovic placed 19th in the state gymnastics meet. I think it was on the floor exercise is what she did. So we were both really proud of them. Our academic decathlon team placed second in the large school division at the state decathlon competition. So they did a wonderful job. When you see them, if you watch the video, that was somebody, you see them marching in the halls and some of them have a lot of hardware on their necks from the, from the decathlon and from those competitions. So really kind of a great thing. Couple upcoming events. We have the Easter egg hunt this Saturday, rain, shine, or snow. It starts at noon and ends at 12:01. So be here a little bit early.
It's so true.
So you can run out and get your eggs. Also, NHS is putting on their spring carnival, April 12th. And the NHS craft show is April 20th. All of those are up at Riverside Campus. They're just great community events to get our community up in here.
I'd give it hunt at least till 12:05.
Well, it's time to get back in the car.
It definitely takes a long to set it up, but it does.
When it's cold, it goes a lot faster. I know that.
How many years have we had snow? Right? It's been a lot.
We've had, I think, maybe back in the days that I did, I think we had two nice days and that was.
Yeah, I can't remember the last time it was nice.
Reminder to all of our, all of our families, young children, we are enrolling a class of 2037 beginning April 2nd. So our kindergarten roundup and registration is on the way. Again, that's the class of 2037. So we're excited to have them become Beavers and join our school. And finally, it is spring break, March 25th next week. So I wish you happy spring break. And just so you know, one of our seasons were close. If you look at Ohio's 12 seasons, we are currently in third winter, but shifting over to the pollinating as we move through in their seasons. But also a reminder that we do not have school on Monday, April 8th because of the total solar eclipse. So that concludes my report.
Thank you. All right. And that brings us to the Treasures Report and Community Updates. So Finance Audit Personnel Committee and Booster Organization Liaison, Mrs. Harden.
So we met yesterday for the Finance Audit Personnel Meeting. Personnel, Mallory, just solicited is now hiring season. They've got a good number of candidates for the preschool position that we're looking to hire for. They're doing all the summer work hiring, things like that. Technology is going to be, they're going to have a lot of projects this summer, so doing some hiring too. We reviewed for, as far as finance, we reviewed the board agenda for today. There's a couple of things I'm going to completely let Gary explain because they're way over my ability to explain well. So I just wrote on here, let Gary explain. We're going to do that. Don't try to explain the commercial increase complaint. So that's going to be one for Gary because I'm sure it's in his report anyhow. He did give us an update on the City of Mentor tax exemption update. There is a hearing scheduled May for, in Columbus, right? For, for them to work on that. They're working with the City of Painesville and meeting with them in early April. We spoke about OPEC negotiations, which we'll discuss in executive session and other places. We had a discussion on the 40 mil floor discussion, which Gary. 20 mil floors? What did I say?
40 mil.
Oh, 20 mil floor discuss, I got 20 and 4 floor. 20 mil floor discussion, which Gary, I'm sure we'll talk about as well. We did talk about how Neonet's going to be taking the place of LGCA. So they'll be doing those. They talked, we'll talk about that. Chromebooks, those purchases are on the agenda, I believe, which will apply to first graders and seventh graders next year in the cycle. But yeah, we said the rest of that. I, I have lots of notes, but it's really, let's be honest, really best for Gary to explain all those things in detail because I'm sure they're all part of his report anyhow.
Or just got longer.
Well. No one needs to hear him twice. Come on. Oh, and then for Booster Organizations, I was just about to get also a comment on the community account this weekend, which is, I love to see that that is still, still going on.
And it's crowded.
It is. I was the one that started that many, many years ago, so I love seeing that it's still around.
All right, I think it's over. Mr. Placco.
All right. Well, I realized tonight that, you know, Dr. Rotino's slides always have nice pictures and exciting stuff. And my activities have words and numbers, so I apologize as we go through.
Kind of your job, words and numbers, right?
So as always, we go through our monthly financial report. These are available on our, on the Treasures website. I have the link listed up there. The total cash balance of all our funds is about $38.7 million currently. Our general fund cash balance is $21.7 million. With our Perman improvement fund, we have uncovered $6.1 million. That went up a little bit from last month because we've got some of our property tax advance. Appropriations and revenues estimates are currently, you know, two-thirds through the fiscal year. Our revenue and expenditures are both sitting at about 64.5% of what we projected. Moving on to the next slide. For the general fund, our revenue was $6.8 million, which includes $570,000 from our state foundation payments. Also includes a $5.8 million property tax advance. And I wanted to note that this is 4.5 million lower than typical, that we typically get in our first advance in February. And it's my understanding, we're talking to the county auditor, has to do with the timing of when the bills are due. They were pushed out a little bit later this year, which resulted in a lower advance than typical. We're supposed to get our settlement towards the end of this month, so that will just, just the timing issue will get those funds made up in that, in that settlement. Interest revenue for February for general fund was just shy of $100,000. We're currently getting 5.48% in Star Ohio. Our retro investment account, which has about 15 million in there, is 3.9% for a total overall yield of 4.8%. I know I saw a news article that they're possibly talking about rate decreases this year. So that would affect the Star Ohio account if that would occur. And then our expenditures for February were about 4.2 million. Going forward, I am, been on the trustee council meeting road show right now, going to each entity and giving some financial updates. I completed Leroy Township on March 11th. Grand River was on March 13th. Concord Township was yesterday. And I have Painesville Township scheduled for April 2nd. I will schedule these again later in the fall when we get near the five-year forecast time. And then some additional updates, the, you know, as Harden mentioned, we have the, the tax exemption appeal hearing in Columbus with the City of Mentor-Painesville dispute. So we'll go there in, in May and see how that turns out. We are also out to bid for the track replacement project. Those bids are due on April 10th at 1:00 PM. And also the Lake County School Financing District Levy renewal is coming up this year. That's the joint levy of Riverside, Painesville, Perry, and Madison. That was last, renewal was last approved in the early 2020, so the five-year period is already up. And so in the April meeting, we'll pass the first resolution of necessity. And May 23rd will be the second resolution to proceed, along the November 5th, 2024 election. Since this is a joint levy, all four schools have to pass both of these resolutions, along with the ESC Western Reserve. So we have to map out everyone's board meeting dates to hit the final deadline, which is the first week of August. But the ESC Western Reserve does not have a July meeting, so that's why we're, it seems that we're a little earlier than typical to get on the November ballot, but we need to meet our timelines. That's why we'll follow.
Gary, is anybody attending the hearing on May 14th?
I'm attending. I'll be there with our.
Radio council.
And then just on tonight's agenda, it's a separate item, we're just past the financial, finance consent agenda, there's a commercial increase tax complaint. We discussed this in, in great detail at the finance meeting. Essentially, we've done this for years. Typically, the board always approves a standing authorization each January that directs the treasurer and leader councils to file increased complaints on commercial properties. We don't do this in residential properties. I think it might be, they might have put a long place to stop that anyways. But on commercial properties, there's a legislation called House Bill 126 that was passed a few years ago. That only allows school districts to file increased valuation complaints on properties where there's a difference of more than $500,000. Essentially, there's a property in Painesville, it's a commercial property, that was purchased by an organization out in California. The county auditor's office has the property valued at 1.9 million or so and it sold for like 4.1 or 4.2 million. So that's a quite a big difference between the two values. And so we filed the increased complaint on that property. Essentially, what that does is ensuring that they pay their fair share with, you know, the different types of levies that we have. You know, it's a commercial property. Our substitute levy and our bond issue levies collect the same rate of taxation across all classes, whether it's residential, commercial, or public utility. So if someone's underpaying on their commercial property, that means everyone else is picking up the difference. Because of House Bill 920, everything equalizes out. So if, we only receive, if, if the increase in valuation is approved, we will receive the revenue on inside mileage, but that will also lower the tax burden for all of our other taxpayers. Now, it's going to be pretty insignificant to the individual taxpayer, but you know, it's just how school districts operate. They're sure people are paying fair share. Typically, it's always done by school districts because they're the largest share of property taxes and they do it on behalf of, and it's not just the school district that benefits, it's the townships, the county, and the libraries, all, anybody, any taxing authority within our district will benefit from, from this process.
It usually takes about a year, does it not?
It, yeah, it takes a while. So with that, if there's any questions, that concludes my report.
Thank you. Thank you. All right, that brings us to public participation. Anyone wishing to address the Board of Education will be recognized by the Board President. Speakers are requested to speak from the podium, and they are requested to identify themselves and their topic. Comments are limited to three minutes. Anyone wishing to speak? Yes, sir.
John Music, Covington Drive, Painesville Township. I want to talk to the board, and like I've said, a lot of this stuff I've said before, but now it's going, getting worse and worse. You mentioned you had a senior night at breakfast meal, and the thing about is, how about speaking about the money, Mr. Fishel, Ms. Brewster? Thank you for asking a lot of questions and so forth and so forth, and I want to thank you in trying to save money. The senior citizens in this Riverside District are hurting financially. As you know, Mr. Placco, like Mr. Zuren, the treasurer, he has now been going to allow people to pay as regards to property taxes, even giving them more flexibility in order to do that. And the thing about it is, it is very, very difficult. So what I'm asking for you, and I've asked this before for the board, to be good stewards of the taxpayer dollars. I personally believe there's a lot of money wasted in our education system. A lot of money could be better spent. And we're in a time, right now, in our country's life, many, many people, where so much money is being spent, the dollar don't mean nothing else. I'm assuming almost everybody in this room is still working. Wait till you aren't working anymore. One out of four in 2020 census, and we, they're predicting one out, one out of three in the 2030 census will be seniors. They're hurting, and I'm asking you to be good stewards and spend money wisely. A lot of things could be put off for a while. Things are bad right now, very, very bad financially. So if you would please do that. And secondly, the thing about is, we're talking about grants, and I've mentioned this before here. I go to a lot of meetings throughout the country. There's a lot of strings attached to grants, and I've seen it before where, we'll give you this grant, but you're going to have to teach this, 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 and this. But no one ever mentions that. I'm asking the board to make sure you do, you're investigating any grant, see which strings are attached. And, you know, remember the letter that was sent out? It was for students can learn and feel comfortable. Well, the thing about is, like the old saying says, "Talk the walk", well, walk the talk. And make sure you do that. It's like Jim Jordan, I talked to Jim, US rep south of here in the 4th District, and he's on a judiciary committee in the House. And the thing about it is, is he wrote a book, "Do what you said you would do." And I'm going to hold each and one of you accountable. Do what you say you would do. If you work for the people of this district, make sure you do so. And right now, we're going through a period in our country. We need all the help we can get as taxpayers. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comments? Yes, sir.
I'm Bill Robertson from Concord Township.
We just ask you to come down here for the camera. Thank you.
I'm Bill Robertson from Concord Township, and this is just general information, so just put this on your, in the back of your mind as you're planning. My education, I have a master's science in metallurgical engineering from Purdue. Corrosion engineering was a big part of the stuff I studied. This is just so you know. And you have to, Mr. Placco will do the cost analysis, and you can decide if it makes sense, but salt in northeast Ohio is a huge issue. The reason that the buses fare better on asphalt than on gravel is because of humidity. So the water, the humidity percolates up through the ground, makes the corrosion work much more effectively, unfortunately. So if you can, with the savings, consider asphalting wherever you park your buses. Just put that in the back of your minds. As far as the undercoating goes, that makes a lot of sense. It seals away the, the salt in the, in the water. If you could have an arrangement, the problem with, with a lot of corrosion is that it happens slowly over time, so it sort of catches up on you. With the cost of the buses increasing, it probably makes sense to spend more on, on maintenance. So if you could have someone hose them down from time to time, I realize it's cold and it's lousy, give them a little incentive of some sort, but that would make a lot of sense. So you can just put that in the back of your mind as you think. I sit on the Business Advisory Committee. This is more for the public. They're doing a great job. Dr. Rotino's guiding us very well, so there's a lot of good things going on at those schools. Just be aware of that. In a general public statement, as they're planning, career planning, I'm 73, the 500-pound gorilla is my generation. Never before in the history of mankind has anybody lived as long as us. Pretty much you sprint to the finish line and then you stopped. Now you live another 20 unproductive years. And those last 15 years are very expensive, and we're going to need support help. So the career planning is going to be a lot of the students who provide the support for the seniors as we live longer. So that's, that's a whole new issue that's never existed before. Second issue is law enforcement. 95% of people are good people. It's the 5% that cause all the laws. And if we have, really the, the real issue is the, is the 1%, which is increased to 2%. Just know that a 1% increase to a 2% increase is 100%. So law enforcement needs to have more support, and that's maybe an area the school needs to focus more on education. So that's just one of the facts we've got to deal with. Otherwise, just keep moving forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comments? Thank you. That brings us to our consent agenda. First on is finance and audit.
Motion to approve the items on the consent agenda, items A through M.
I'll second.
I'm sorry, N.
I'll still second.
It's actually A through L, item N is a separate item.
Okay, A through L, my bad. Thank you, Mrs. Grassi. Is there any discussion? Okay, we do have some donations. We'll announce really quickly. We have an $8,230 donation from Riverside Band Boosters for the purchase of a new computer system, $500 from SSC Controls Company to the rape program, $2,000 from Mentor Nissan to Riverside Softball, and $540 from the RBI Club to the baseball team for the purchase of hats. So thank you all very much for those donations. If there's no other discussion, you can call roll, please.
Scott Fishel?
Aye.
Jennifer Harden?
Aye.
Lori Kniske?
Aye.
Glenn DeGrasse?
Aye.
Denise Brewster?
Aye.
Motion carried.
And then we have a motion to approve the consent agenda item, letter N, please.
I'll second.
Thank you, Mrs. Grassi. Any discussion?
This clarifies the commercial increase complaint.
No further discussion, you can call roll, please.
Jennifer Harden?
Aye.
Lori Kniske?
Aye.
Glenn DeGrasse?
Aye.
Denise Brewster?
Aye.
Scott Fishel?
Aye.
Motion carried.
Motion to approve items A through F on the personnel consent agenda. If you can have a second, please.
I'll second.
Is there any discussion? If not, call roll, please.
Lori Kniske?
Aye.
Glenn DeGrasse?
Aye.
Denise Brewster?
Aye.
Scott Fishel?
Aye.
Jennifer Harden?
Aye.
Motion carried. That brings us to Buildings and Grounds and Operations.
Make a motion to approve the items listed on the Buildings and Grounds Operations Consent Agenda as recommended by the Superintendent, items A through D.
I'll second.
Thank you.
Mr. Placco, can you just reiterate the purpose of item D, so that the public is aware of what we are required to do?
Yeah, so the Ohio Facilities Construction Commission is requiring us to approve a third amendment to their, to our master planning agreement. If you were to look at that agreement, it has, you know, construction of the 612 campus and, you know, that was already on the ballot in May of 2022. That's just in there because that, that was the current plan that we were following when Phase 1 was completed, and we're currently working on the closeout of Phase 1. So they had to, we had to approve an amendment because we had sold some of the elementary schools and to capture the credit that we're going to be approving on Phase 1. So that's why there's a, reapproving the agreement even on Phase 2 has already been to the ballot and was unsuccessful. It's still listed in there because right now there's no other true plan to, to list it.
And then if, if there ever is another plan that we decide to go forward and apply to OFCC for, we would submit a different master plan at that point in time.
Correct, they would revise it again. So we're not really committing to anything, and that's just housekeeping from Phase 1. It's on Parkside and River View.
Any further discussion? Harry Nugent, please call roll.
Glenn DeGrasse?
Aye.
Denise Brewster?
Aye.
Scott Fishel?
Aye.
Jennifer Harden?
Aye.
Lori Kniske?
Aye. Motion carried. All right, that brings us to Board of Education updates.
Any updates? I can tell you, I've sat with Dr. Rotino and Mr. Placco at the Township updates. Been very welcomed. I think we talked a little bit last night about maybe getting them back in now to come and talk to us about what's going on in the communities, and vice versa, just hear what's going on. So, but very positive, so.
And I would just say I would remind anybody who's listening who's got seniors that the time for scholarships is coming close. If you have not applied for scholarships, every year we're definitely working, really, I have a lot of people, we have a lot of scholarships that don't get a lot of action, which is really a shame, because there's a lot out there that our students could benefit from. So seniors should definitely be looking for that right now. Okay. And I, I wanted to mention the district survey that Nick came up with for the senior dinner. It was an opportunity, since we had so many people there, to get some feedback from them. And then I got some additional copies because I attend a lot of different things and just continue to hand them out, because it's good to hear from them. And the senior dinner and the play were fabulous. There were many more people there for the spring event. Over the November, we spilled out over into the bistro, and that gave me an opportunity to see the bistro and also see the future construction of our, our new space, where the picnic tables are, and I know they'll be relocated, but it was great to see it. It's very exciting. And let's see, I, I think that's it. I appreciate the students and the staff involved in creating that dinner and the play. Many, many hands, and it was very successful.
Any other updates? All right, so I make a motion to adjourn to executive session. So be it resolved that the Riverside Local School, District Board of Education hereby adjourns to executive session at 7:24 p.m. to discuss negotiations and personnel matters relating to the employment of public officials and compensation. And the Riverside Local School District Board of Education hereby designates all matters discussed in this executive session as strictly confidential, and finds that this designation is warranted because of the status of this matter and the need to preserve confidentiality to properly conduct the business of the Board of Education.
I'll second.
Thank you. Mr. Placco, can you call roll?
Denise Brewster?
Aye.
Scott Fishel?
Aye.
Jennifer Harden?
Aye.
Lori Kniske?
Aye.
Glenn DeGrasse?
Aye. Motion carried. Real quick, because I know we don't come back, just so everybody knows, our next meetings, we have Curriculum and Programming, Curriculum and Programs Committee meeting April 3rd at 7:30 a.m., Buildings and Grounds Committee meeting April 9th, 7:30 a.m., Finance and Audit Personnel Committee meeting April 11th at 7:30 a.m., and Board of Education meeting April 18th at 6 p.m. Sorry, I should probably move that up earlier, but.
Maybe we'll adjust the agendas in the future, so it's.
Before, okay.